7:00 PM. I'd like to call the October 23, 2018 College Place City Council meeting to order. If we could please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pray.
Yes. Would you lead our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that we've had. We ask that you would help us as we make the decisions for the city, that the decisions be made according to your will. And again, we thank you for our wonderful staff, in Jesus' name. Amen.
It's now time for our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, before you as a consent agenda, approve this evening's agenda, approving the council minutes from October 9, 2018, an appointment to the Youth Advisory Board, an addendum regarding the City of Sunnyside jail contract with the City of College Place, and city standards and specification drawings update. Is there a motion?
So move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We do have, we're going to have a slight change in the agenda in that two city employees are not present this evening, but we do have a proclamation. And that is, whereas Arbor Day was established in 1872 by Jay Sterling Morton of Nebraska as a day set aside to plant trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas the addition of trees to the landscape has been shown to stimulate economic development, and whereas the City of College Place recognizes that trees and parks are important to enhance the beauty of the city and actively encourages the planting and care of trees throughout the city, now therefore I, Harvey Crowder, Mayor of the City of College Place, do hereby proclaim October 23, 2018, as College Place Arbor Day, and appeal to the residents of College Place to celebrate Arbor Day and thank those who attended a tree planting ceremony today at Kiwanis Park with Davis Elementary students, fifth grade students, which was really quite an affair. I encourage residents to plant trees and care for trees in College Place for the well-being of this and future generations, given under my hand and seal as the Mayor of City of College Place, this 23rd day of October, 2018. Mr. Rizzatello.
We have a representative from Spokane Conservation District to give us our first award since this is the first year where we're a tree city.
Thank you. So my name's Garth Davis, and I'm here representing the Washington Department of Natural Resources, and more specifically, the Washington Community Forestry Advisory Council. Basically, here to congratulate you guys on achieving Tree City USA status for the first time. For standards, you just did one, playing Arbor Day, and every year you do that. The second standard is that you guys created an ordinance about the care of trees in your community. You have a tree committee as well?
Parks and Arbs.
Yes, our park Arbor.
Okay. And then you have a budget dedicated to caring for trees in your community. And I'm sorry to say, I don't think I've ever been to College Place before, or maybe I have and I thought I was in Walla Walla. But, you know, I know that Walla Walla is really known for some of its champion trees, some of the largest of their species in the state. And so I got my book out, and I looked, and sure enough, three of those trees of note are, were in College Place. And I did go find one on Elm Street, that was the huge silver maple over there. There's a silver linden on the campus that's a champion tree. And then I looked for a catalpa that I think might be gone, but that happens to be a little tree sometimes. But it's a neat mix. You pull into town, and as soon as you see College Place, you see little trees that have been planted in the recent past. So it's a great combination of mature trees and new trees. And Tree City USA is a jumping off point for a management program for your community. You're just the right size today. Whoever the contact is for Tree City USA received the grant award notice or the grant application notice. And you guys are right under $10,000, so you qualify for that small community grant, and it's available to do a lot of things to help you manage your new trees and your old trees. So, and congratulations, and happy Arbor Day.
Well, everybody gets an opportunity to have a picture with the proclamation.
Did you say you saw a catalpa tree?
I didn't find the catalpa.
You couldn't?
It was on GOES, right at the end of college, and I didn't see it out there.
I couldn't see one either.
Thank you for coming along. You bet. You guys.
Great. And I believe this will answer.
Okay. Thank you. And just a reminder, the DNR program's here to assist, so if you guys need technical assistance, we're free, we'll come and provide technical assistance or help you out over the weekend.
All right. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So we do have a public hearing this evening. It is Ms. Kilgore, Revenues and Property Tax Levy Presentation in Public Hearing.
Okay. I'm going to start out by going through this PowerPoint with you guys. This is a presentation on the revenues for 2019's budget and the property tax levy and where we stand with both of those. So I'll go through the major revenue sources first in the budget. So for retail sales tax next year, we're predicting about 1.8 million. That includes the sales and use tax, criminal justice tax, hotel motel tax, and natural gas use tax. So it's the sales tax on all of those, or fund all of those. The second is utility taxes, and these are budgeted at just under 1.3 million. This includes all of your standard electric, gas, garbage, cable, and now water and wastewater beginning with this year, and then also telephone. And then we have permits and licenses, and this number is way bigger than it has been in the past. And that's because we're predicting that utility connections for water and wastewater are going to be substantial next year, based on the development that we foresee happening. So this is, I can't do the math in my head. It's over 600,000, like 685,000 or something like that per, 680,000 per utility in connection This also, this 1.67 million also includes franchise fees, and then building permits and plan check fees. Okay. Next, we have state shared revenues at about 455,000. These are the revenues that get passed through to us by the state, including the tax on fuel, tax on liquor, and the local government assistance, as well as another source of criminal justice tax. And then we have our EMS levy, which I'm predicting to be around 315,000 for next year. We have our proprietary funds down here, water and wastewater revenues, water at just under 2.5 million, and wastewater at just under 3 million. We also have stormwater, which I didn't get on the slide for some reason. That, and I'm sorry, I don't know that figure off the top of my head.
Mr. Peterson. The new recruitment for out-of-state, the term for that, what do you call it, for out-of-state sales tax?
Marketplace fairness.
Marketplace fairness. That would be under the retail, the first category that you showed.
Yes, it's included in the retail.
And what was the approximate amount of that again?
I budgeted 45,000.
45,000?
It's probably going to be more than that, but just being the first year, I didn't want to over budget.
And what was that called again?
Marketplace fairness.
Okay. Thank you.
Some other sources of revenue coming in this next year are quite a bit of loans and bond money. So this is 7.8 million in loans. 5.6 of that is for our wells and the loop line, 120,000 for stormwater equipment, and approximately 2 million for wastewater infrastructure. That is a placeholder right now. I know it's going to be around 2 million, but I don't have it dialed in exactly yet, so. And then we also have grants that, we have lots of grants that we have applied for, for next year, in all of these different areas, streets, parks, and then the three utilities, stormwater, water, and wastewater. And finally, we are going to discuss property tax. That's the last major source of revenue for the city, and that is forecasted to be about 1.93 million next year. So first, I'll take you through our assessed valuation. So our regular valuation is 647 million. When they get that long, I have to think about what they are. We have new construction added to that of 18,878. So our total valuation is almost $666 million. For comparison's sake, last year's valuation was 615, so the change is just around 50 Now, we can only take a maximum of 1% increase per year as a city in Washington. So the 2018 levy was 1,386,000. If you multiply that by 101%, you get 1.4 million and change. And that increase from that 1% being applied is under 14,000, so not very much, but it's So for the new construction calculation, our new construction valuation, as I stated before, was 18,878. And the increase in our tax base from that new construction comes out to be 42,487. Wait, what is this? How do those two numbers correlate? So if I apply last year's levy rate to the new construction, it comes up to 42,000. So levy amount calculation. So if we decide to move forward with 101%, that's what I've shown in the slides. 101% is the 1.4 million, the new construction amount is the 42,000. So the total with the 1% increase is 1,443,235. And that makes the levy rate per $1,000 assessed value, $2 and rounded up, it'd be $2.17. And last year's was 2.25. So that was the regular levy. Now we're going to talk about the bond levy, and this is the bond levy for the Cars Project financing, the 7 million in bonds that we took out in 2014, I believe it was. So the valuation for the bond levy is different than the valuation for regular. The bond levy valuation is the regular valuation minus the items that are exemptions from bond debt tax. So that's senior exemptions, nonprofit owned property that's included in there too. So that valuation is 651 million. Our long-term debt requirement for next year is 489,050, and so that comes out to be about 75 cents per thousand. So if you take the regular levy rate of $2.16, 17 cents, somewhere in there, the bond levy rate of 75 cents, that means that if we take the 1% increase, the levy rate per thousand would be $2.91. Without the 1% it'd be 2.89. So this just gives you kind of a better look at the differences in the combined levies. So 2018 combined levy rate was $3.06 per thousand. 2019 combined rate is projected at 2.89 without the increase, and if you look at the 1% increase, it's 2.91. And this shows the change from last year's for each of these. So if we take the 1%, the change is a decrease of just a little over 14 cents per thousand. And then in the far right-hand column, these are the total amounts of the levies when they're all multiplied out. So these are the total amounts that we would anticipate collecting based on those rates. This is just a graphical view of our assessed valuations for the last 10 or so years. You can see that we were very flat for quite a while here, and then when the economy started to pick up, we've seen an increase each year since then, and more substantially in these last three years. So this shows the 665,000, or, yeah, 665 million, sorry, and a change of around 50,000, or 50 million. My goodness, I need to really get more sleep. So property tax.
That's not happening for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we're laughing.
Property tax new construction valuation history is what's depicted here in this chart. So this is kind of all over the board, depending on what developers are doing each year. But we had a big year in 2017. 2018's valuation, not quite so much, and then the 2019 valuation was based on the almost 19 million. And then, this is a graph that the county does every year, and I just wanted to point out that College Place receives about 2.4 cents of each dollar that's collected in property tax in the county. So this pie chart is everything that's collected. This light blue section is the amount that actually goes to the cities, and that includes all the cities, not just College Place. So of the total 70, almost 77 million that's collected, only 10% of that even goes to the cities as a whole. And then on this next slide, it shows you how much of that amount that goes to the cities actually goes to College Place. So, well, this is how each dollar of property tax is spent. So we have the school bonds, state school fund, school O&amp;M, this tiny little sliver in the dark blue is our general fund levy, and then this teeny tiny little sliver in the light blue is our bond levy amount. And then other cities are this amount on the end. We've got the county, the port, the port is this black one, and EMS is right here. So, and this is, just depicts, this tiny little slice right here depicts the 2.4 cents of each dollar going to the city. I think that's it. Yep. So that's, that's a brief overview of our revenues, our major revenue sources for next year, where I think they're going to be roughly at this point, and the numbers that make up the levy calculations. So I think that's the end of my presentation.
Questions from Ms. Kilgore. Mr. Peterson.
It's interesting, in an expanding assessed value, it really does not have a benefit for the cities because it's diluted. There are certain amounts of our taxes that are, do increase, I think with valuations, but not so much for the city. It's more though a case where it basically mitigates the 1% increase, as you pointed out repeatedly, which was really nice to see, the impact of 1%.
Yeah.
It's still coming in at a per thousand less than it was for last year.
Yeah.
And the main point of income is you went back to the other taxes, of course, new constructions and the fees, correct? It's more that than obviously the assessed values that are coming through, that when we eye new construction, it's more the fees than it is anything to do with assessed value?
Um.
And what I mean by that, assessed value could go up 50%, but it's more diluted by the expenditures and the drops per assessed value per each household member, correct?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Ms. Silvers.
Thanks.
I'm not sure which part of the agenda is the appropriate time to put this out, so I'll just put it out now. So I have a really long-term concern about this because the rate of inflation alone is running 1.8 to 2%. Projected to go higher. So our purchasing power is falling every year. Every time we get new construction, that purchasing power is spread over more homes. So things like fixing our streets and stuff just get further and further off. So I think, obviously, I don't think College Place can fix this by ourselves, but I think we really need to be pushing with AWC for some sort of alternate revenue source. I mean, even if the property tax went up 1% per household as opposed to, you know, 1% per city, because the faster we grow, the bigger, further in the hole we get.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Every new house costs us money. And it's magnified by the fact that every new, the more residential construction that happens expands the need for city services.
Exactly.
And so it becomes, it becomes the balancing act of not only encouraging residential growth, but encouraging business to help make up for the shortfall in that. And that's just, you know, it's, right now, it's a structural, it's a legislative structural fix.
Right.
I don't think it's on the agenda this year for AWC, is it, Mr. Rizzatello?
It's not on the AWC agenda, in our agenda, which will be coming out for discussion at the next workshop. It's on our suggested one.
It's, it's, what, utilities help balance some of that, but not all. Mr. Dickerson.
I remember back in the early 90s, making a report that for cities across America, wherever a dollar they gained in revenue from residential, costing a dollar 25 to provide the services, and that have really hasn't changed. What we tried to do in our city, and we've been pretty successful, is balance out this bedroom community with more commercial revenues and taxes coming in. And so if we think it's bad today, you should take a look at what the city was like a few years ago before we got some of these commercial establishments.
Mr. Rizzatello has been working diligently at doing business recruitment because we have, we have land prime for commercial development that won't affect the ability for residential development and keep the core of the city like a small town.
Yeah. And there's quite the stuff that should pop next year. A lot of it is being driven by the fact we received that Opportunity Zone designation because there is about two calls today on that, so.
The only way we used to survive was through equalization, which was anywhere between 700 and 900,000 dollars a year from the state. And when that went away, we only made up for it. And so we kind of were just still at the status quo.
Yeah.
Mike, could you repeat what you just said about your bill phone call? I'm sorry, I missed.
Opportunity Zone, so if you recall earlier this year, we pursued that application through the state to be deemed an Opportunity Zone, where if you do development and you're investing capital gains, you can defer your capital gains for up to seven years, and then get a 15% forgiveness, and then shuffle money around between opportunity funds. And then actually, anyone who wants to invest in a project, because the IRS guidance is pretty loose on it, you can actually create your own opportunity fund. So initially, the bill was written where it sounded like there had to be a certified opportunity fund. They never clarified that, so you could just say, hey, I'm an opportunity fund and go do an investment project. So that's getting quite a bit of capital into projects, and quite a few people are interested.
Thanks. Any other questions for Ms. Kilgore or Mr. Rizzatello? In that case, I'd like to open the public hearing on Revenues and Property Tax Levy Presentation. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council for or against the property tax and revenues projected, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. Once again, anyone wishing to testify to the College Place City Council on revenues and property tax levies, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council to address the revenues and property tax levy, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
It's been, it's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, state by aye.
Aye.
No, the same sign? Hearing is closed. Ms. Kilgore, property tax levy.
Okay. So you have in front of you a resolution for the levy with a 1% increase, as well as a levy certification for the same. That's, I prepared the 1% just based on historical direction, so I can bring back something different, or you can move forward with that if you'd like tonight.
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor, I move to approve the 2019 levy resolution number 18-037.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. I wash my mouth this morning. Can't do a thing with it.
Okay, I'm up again?
What?
Am I up again?
You are up again.
Okay.
Ordinance establishing protocols for credit cards.
Okay. I am bringing this forward to you this evening as kind of a stopgap fix for somewhat of a situation that has developed over this last year. We, as part of going to express bill pay and accepting, we started accepting credit cards, I think it was three or four years ago now. And that's all been great and wonderful. Our receivables have gone down, our disconnects have gone down with the utilities. It's been great. However, over the last year or so, our developers who are doing a lot of business have decided to start paying their development fees and permits with credit cards, and that has resulted in a lot of cost to the city to process those. in a lot of cost to the city to process those. So on the other end of things, we have also had an issue of people, mainly it's record requests for photocopies and that kind of thing, where it's just like a tiny amount that they need to pay, but they, all they have is a card. So by the time we run their card, it's costing us more money than it would be just to give them for free. So we wanted to bring this forward in the next phase of financial policies as some credit card protocol, but that's not going to happen for a few months until we're done with budget. So in the meantime, we wanted to bring forward this ordinance which establishes protocols for credit card receipts to the city. And we would like to put a minimum amount of $3 per transaction and a maximum amount of $3,000 per transaction around credit card usage. We think that would be the most prudent way to handle the situation. And what this would do is still, it would still allow our developers to make electronic payments, they could do that via e-check or ACH transfer, and that can also be done over the phone through express bill pay. It's just that we don't have the same processing fees for those, we have just like a flat, I don't know, it's like 30 cents processing fee for that kind of thing instead of the processing fee plus a percentage of the sale. So it shouldn't affect our customers really at all as far as being able to make an instant payment from wherever they are, it would just save the city money.
Questions from Ms. Kilgore? Mr. Cleveland?
On say a $3,000 transfer, what is the percentage of the credit card spending per month?
Well, it varies depending on the credit card brand, so Visa, MasterCard, do we do, is it Discover that we use? Yeah, we take Discover, we don't take Amex. So I can't say exactly, it depends on the dollar amount in the transaction, what kind of card they use.
If they enter it versus it being swiped?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it's a different charge depending on how it's run, so yeah, I can't, I can't really answer.
Two to three and a half percent?
Actually, it's oftentimes higher than that, like I would say.
Three and a half percent?
Yeah, yeah. For those smaller transactions.
Upwards of 7% on small transactions.
Yep, pardon, he's right.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Mr. Rizzatello?
On the floor of this, the $3, I would just mention if you go Rogers Bakery, they have identical cutoff limit of $3 because of that.
I think that's basically a break even.
Yeah.
Did you do research on, and that's okay to do the minimum and maximum?
Yeah.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore?
I thought this was going to address the fees that we charged them, what, I'm sorry, you mentioned it, what are the current fees that we charge individuals to process, or do we not?
We don't.
And so is that what you're talking about addressing at a later date, or are we not looking to go there?
No, basically, we just want to incorporate the same protocol into our next phase of official financial policies. We just don't have the rest of that phase done, so we just wanted to bring forward just the ordinance for this tonight.
Right.
We don't charge processing fees to our customers on credit card transactions currently.
And we're not planning to?
No.
At this moment?
No, we did that in Colfax and among the people who started paying the credit card dropped off and payments dropped off, so it's just a bad idea.
Thanks.
We just had like saving money, I'll motion to approve ordinance number 18-024, establish protocol for payment for these credit cards and for city services.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. You're still on the hook. Sole source procurement.
Okay, so in Washington, the RCWs allow cities to make purchases without going through the whole bidding process under certain situations. One of those being if the purchase is really only available from one source. So if there's only one provider of the item or the service, then you really can't get multiple bids on it, so you have to go with the one provider. Then there are a few other situations that apply where you would need to, or where you would only have one supplier to choose from. So this agenda item has to do with sole source procurement. This is something that this year the audit team looked at really closely was procurement and sole sourcing. And based on their feedback and a few comments that they had, we decided we wanted to adopt a formal process for sole source purchasing for the city. Currently, our department heads basically just make phone calls, informal notes, they don't necessarily have a standard procedure they go through to document that they looked for other sources before deciding to go with one particular one without bidding. So basically, what the auditors told us was that's completely fine to go through that kind of a process, but you have to document it. So what we brought forward to you tonight is a form that we would make standard for all of our department heads to use when they are making a purchase that they feel is sole source. And it just documents that they looked for other places to buy it, it documents the reason why there's really only one source for the purchase and why they are not going to move forward through the bidding process in the procurement. And we wanted to go ahead and bring this forward right away, just as, basically symbolically that we are trying to be proactive in making sure our processes are completely above board and in line. So not to mention, it's something we should have been doing all along, so.
Mr. Dickerson? So how far out do we look with this single source?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How far out do we look in search for people that are available to provide that service so that bid?
Oh.
Mr. Rizzatello?
I can give the answer, for instance, with the one issue where this came up, which was a used dump truck that was bought a while back, they actually called in that case up to 12 dealers, even go checking all the way out on the I-5 corridor, and it was a situation where if you're buying a used dump truck, they don't hold on to it or try to answer an RFP, it's do you want it or not, then I'll sell it to someone else if you don't. So it has to do with that, we've looked all the way out to I-5 corridor on issues like that.
Well, I think our, our new field truck is a perfect example.
Yeah.
That was purchased in Utah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so used vehicles are one thing that there's an exception for because you can't really do an RFP for a used vehicle because they're in all different conditions and different mileage, and you're not going to be able to get bids from multiple sources for the same exact vehicle if it's used.
Yeah, depending on how you write the specs.
So anyway, this form would just standardize our city's procedure for doing sole source procurement and, yeah, just cross our Ts and dot our Is, basically.
Just an additional question, are there any other advantages, hidden advantages that we're not thinking of for using the form?
Well, I think, I mean, anytime you're documenting your process, it's always, you know, a good record to have if you need to go back and see where.
No disadvantages?
I don't, I can't think of any, other than the time to complete the form, I guess.
I would say one of the advantages, if I may, is that it makes the department heads think, am I just picking up the phone and buying this? I need to fill this out, wait a minute, I might have another source out there that could get it in the last class, so just that might be an advantage.
Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to approve of the list and number 18-038, adopting the standardized sole source program.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. I don't see Mr. Gordon here.
Yeah, I'll cover this one, it's fairly straightforward here. Robert, he is out at the Infrastructure Assistance Coordinating Council Conference trying to secure some grant money for us, so that's where he's at, Paul's out in Charleston, South Carolina on vacation. So with this contract amendment, pretty much all this is, is there's no net gain or loss on this, there were efficiencies in the well number one design and the water main design plan. However, with our consultants, with RH2, it was discovered that we needed to do some SCADA improvements in our overall system, so thus, we need this contract amendment to move forward with that. So that's all of this, there's no additional monies, it's just moving the savings over into the SCADA system.
So for the uneducated, could you describe what the SCADA system is?
The, as far as SCADA system, that just helps operate the flows of the water system, volumes, things of that nature, computerized system.
Other questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Mr. Dickerson?
I move we approve of the RH2 contract amendment number two for water system consolidation and well number two relocation, project system control and data acquisition master plan.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where, where are they moving well two, number two?
So, so the one well is going to be over on Pepper's Bridge by Christ Community Fellowship, the second well is going to be on property the city owns across the street from the two water tanks over by Maple and Whitman, that area. And that way, they aren't in line with each other, so the situation shouldn't happen again, we hope.
I have another question.
Ms. Nyhagen?
Well, number two used to be there on Fourth Street.
Yeah.
I used to live there. What about that building where the well is? What happens to it? The reason I ask is they've had that property for sale, and I was with somebody that was thinking about buying it, but they didn't know what happened to that building. Is it going to stay there?
That is something that we are going to look at discussing ultimately, I always get the numbers mixed up between well one and.
I have, I have some information. Well, well number two will probably be decommissioned and the building demolished.
Okay.
Because it's very close to a sewer line.
Yes, in somebody's backyard.
And, and that decommissioning that well would probably receive support from the Department of Health. Well number, the well number one building and facility will retain for a bit as we have adequate property there, and should we need to, we can do something with that. But well number two will eventually be decommissioned, which basically means pulling the casing, droughting it in, and closing it off. The assumption is that we will eventually dispose of the property.
Thank you. Thank you.
So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Doring, city insurance provider information?
All right, currently for city insurance, we are with CIAW, City Insurance Association in Washington. And as far back as I could find, which was 1987, we've been with them since then, so we thought that it might be time to take a look at the costs and the benefit we're getting from them to see if we're worthy of money. So I'm just here to let you know that it will be presented at the workshop, the next workshop that's coming up. If we were to want to change, we would need to notify our current provider no later than November 30, 2018. So we just ask that you review the documents. Another reason that we were kind of maybe a weaker point of our current insurance is the training that they provide seems to be limited. The other two that we received quotes from have strong training program for our staff. What else? Oh, the other thing I wanted to point out was that if you look at the points that we got, our current provider is substantially less than the other two, the other two being RMSA, which is through AWC, don't ask me what that stands for right now, and then WCIA. Those are the three most common providers that I could find in the state of Washington. There were very few cities that weren't covered by one of those three. Anyway, CIAW, our current provider, we are not covered for earthquake and flood. I don't know if it's always, I seem to think it's always been like that for quite a while, as far back as I can find, whereas the other two quoted flood and earthquake insurance. So I hope to have an updated quote for you before the workshop so that it's a more apples to apples comparison.
Questions from Ms. Doring?
I can answer.
Mr. Peterson?
Would that earthquake insurance cover shift in wells?
You could always try. Yeah, that is something we could inquire about, so.
So in your package tonight, there's a quote for each one of the three, there's several other cities that sent their review of the other two, they're all positive, and then I went ahead and told their financial position from the auditors' quotes.
Yep.
Anyway, that's in there as well.
This may not apply, are these insurances claim, claim made versus a tail coverage, or is that, or most of these are like a liability as it is filed or that occurs, but there's no necessarily a look back history for events, or?
Well, I mean, actually, there is a look back history because we were looking, doing this evaluation earlier, but apparently there, there was a claim against us made in like 2012 on an issue where actually it precluded us from getting a good rate from WCIA, but then it fell off the history and then it actually made sense to do the quotes. There is tail on this as well, depending on how we negotiate, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike, thanks.
I'm sorry, I have a question on the last one, do we have room in the budget to have a higher, I mean, obviously insurance coverage is good, but.
Oh, just to clarify that, the way moving from one insurance to the other is you have to actually give a year notice so it wouldn't take effect next year, it would be for the 2020 budget if we decided to do that.
Question?
Aye.
Any other questions? Now, Mr. Rizzatello, capital, facility, equipment, and information technology plans.
Okay, I went over this at length the last time, so I'm, I'm not going to bore you with it, I'll just cover the salient points. The six-year budget as is for capital facilities, the need is around $80 million, lion's share of that is the wastewater utility because of the needs to update the wastewater treatment plant, that is where quite a bit of the capital is needed, as well as the streets and then water. And keep in mind, as we redo streets, if the utilities underneath are shot, we try to do all that at the same time, so that way we don't have a new road then. to do all that at the same time, so that way we don't have a new road, then we have to go dig it all up again when something rots underneath it. Uh, there is a column within these spreadsheets as a prioritization of high, medium, and low, uh, and what that pretty much indicates is just if, let's say, we didn't get grants, for example, what is the demonstrated need in talking with staff? Are the streets or, uh, mains or pipes in that case completely rotted? Regardless, something has to happen. Uh, medium is that it can be kicked out some, and then low, uh, is if, let's say, there's a future development, because as we all know, extending south, uh, that's a wild card. McCurn and Christiansen, that's solid, but going south along 125 as far as, uh, when things get developed, uh, a lot of that's going to be driven by the development community, and they'll be paying for a majority of that, that's driven by them. Uh, the biggest projects, uh, is the C Street, which crosses water and wastewater and streets. That's about 2 million. Uh, the treatment plant, again, that's around 28 million over that, uh, six-year period. And then our, uh, two well projects are still in here because although we're working on it now, quite a bit of the work is going to go into, uh, 2019. A lot of this we're going after grant funds for, uh, and, and other sources, uh, like that. Uh, the one other thing I want to draw attention to is within the, uh, stormwater utility. Uh, as far as the street sweeper and vector, we're trying to make a rung on that sooner than later, uh, because right now we do qualify for the USDA Rural Development Community Facility Grant and Loan Program. That's only applicable until we hit, uh, 10,000 population, and then we lose that ability. We're at 9,590 right now, so we're very close. I am working on it aggressively, which is a pain because there's about 400 forms because it's the federal government, but, uh, hopefully free money. So, uh, well, yeah, yeah, true, but it's something if you have to, regardless. Uh, so, uh, please look at these, uh, spreadsheets. We'll be calling, uh, meeting a public works committee to go over the final phasing of this, and we'll send out a doodle poll.
Questions for Mr. Rizikella? More to follow.
Yep.
Legislative agenda, Mr. Rizikella.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is just sharing with you all, uh, what is the Association of Washington Cities' legislative agenda. They have, uh, a dinner a couple of weeks ago in Kennewick to go over this, uh, the I went to. Uh, key things that they're trying to make a rung at, uh, this upcoming fiscal year is economic development tools, which we discussed. Uh, state of Washington's the only one that does not do, uh, tax increment financing or value capture, so they're going to try to make a push for that, and we're actively engaged in that. Uh, other ones is keeping the Public Works Trust Fund afloat. They are wuthering, uh, money again, and we want to see that continue. Uh, additional tools to deal with affordable housing, uh, a systems approach to deal with fish blocking culverts, uh, because there was a court case, uh, against, uh, the various Department of Transportation's, and there's a belief, uh, because of the way that landed, that that's going to filter down, uh, to counties and cities. Uh, providing, uh, additional funding for Criminal Justice Training Commission. There's a lot of police officers that need to go through that, and there's not enough of the classes to get them through in a timely manner, so it's an issue for us, and it's a significant issue pretty much all over the state. It's a major issue. I mean, most cities are going months and months.
Troy, Regina, yeah, wait time?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, right now it's about five months.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's because of attrition, uh, the economy's doing well, so I'll just retire and go and find other work, and he's leaving, uh, dabs in, uh, cities and counties, and, and, um, they just didn't plan long enough for that.
So it's five months from the time of hire?
From the time of hire, as soon as they get their hire letter, we can apply for the academy. Now, we, we were fortunate enough to get Tanner Colton, the academy, a little bit sooner. I think it took three months. He was on standby at the last second, and someone pulled out, which they did, and he jumped in on the opportunity, so we were lucky that...
So given that five-month wait, how long until a patrol officer can be by themselves on the street?
So you have that five-month wait, and you have 22 weeks to the academy, and then they're 12 weeks of FPO, so it's, uh, it's a long process.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Um, the last item on here is tools to deal with, uh, a failure in behavioral health system. So this is, uh, the legislative agenda, the Association of Washington Cities, uh, is pursuing. Uh, as you may remember from, uh, last year, uh, we created, uh, our own legislative agenda, both on a state and federal level. Uh, the lobbyist for the county, city, and the port, uh, Mr. Brian Enslo, he will be here at the next council workshop, uh, to go over that with you. Uh, the one thing we're going to have to add to it is and on here is that property tax thing, uh, that you alluded to. Uh, for some reason, Association of Washington Cities is not, uh, pursuing that. I've called my counterparts in other cities. It's going on their legislative agendas. Everyone's a little perplexed as to why it didn't make it up to the top, but it is what it is.
It's on the county's, the WAC's legislative agenda.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you know, um, this is for you, Mike.
Yeah.
Do you know, uh, what percentage of the cities take advantage of that 1% each year?
Oh, I, I have to look that up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
One of the pushes that cities and counties get back from the state is you're not taking advantage of all the funding opportunities you can take advantage of. And you have cities like College Place who do take advantage of it, and you can go back to the state and say, we still need help. So I just wonder if there are quite a few cities out there that don't take advantage of that, and maybe that's a reason why AWC doesn't want to stand up and say, we're doing everything we can to help us.
Well, I, I mean, I will say anecdotally, from when I was up in Whitman County and a lot of your more rural communities, there's just an allergy, uh, to that taxation at all, even if your infrastructure's decaying, uh, so in a lot of those places, they don't.
The, the county has banked 4%. They may bank another percentage this year. Um, it, it's interesting, their 1% amounted to about $78,000. You know, we, actually, we're doing quite well with, with our 1% plus the new construction, which...
Yeah. Well, well, and the thing I would close with it is I, I find it interesting, a lot of people are hung up on between 0 and 1, because I feel everyone's lucky that it's at 1%, because at Oregon, you can go up to 6%, and, uh, and then Illinois, there isn't really much of a cap over there at all, and that causes other interesting manifestations. Uh, but yeah, it, it's interesting, especially when you think about with that 1%. I mean, we can try as hard as we can to control costs, but your, uh, costs are growing between 2% and 3%, yet you're stuck at that 1%. It's just not realistic. It isn't.
Thank you, Mr. Rizikella. Ms. Kilgore, proposed budget report.
Yeah, so this is, there's two reports in your packet, um, not in the packet, but what? No, it's okay. Um, one is, it says it's proposed budget comparison, and what it has is the 2018 budget, the proposed 2019 budget, and then the difference between the two, so you guys can kind of compare. And the budget is summarized by department, so it's, it's not showing you every single little account that we have, it's just kind of summarized by department, so department and subdepartment. It's not the easiest to read report, but it's what I was able to spit out of the system. It's a snapshot in time. There have actually been, um, changes to the budget since that was printed, so don't, you know, hold me to those numbers exactly, because they will, they've already changed, they will continue to change until, you know, the end, but, um, that's that for you guys to see. And then I also included a budget position report, so where we are at year-to-date, um, with the 2018 budget. And that is a report that's in your monthly financials packet, but because we're behind with the monthly financials right now, um, it was, I, we thought it was important to put that in, in the administrative reports for you. Yeah, if you guys have questions on that after you look at it, feel free to email or call me here.
And, and I would just say in the next couple of weeks, there'll also be a request for finance committee and a doodle poll for that, so.
Mike, the, the timeframe is to be within two weeks?
Uh, yeah.
Or is enough invitation, or the?
Uh, it'll be within the next, like, three weeks, because there's that bonus week because of the way October is, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Selby?
This isn't really a question for Sarah, but I don't know what a place to put it. Um, we got proposals from various library districts, and, um, in order to, as I understand it, in order to get a lib, into a library district, it has to go to a local people. And given that most people will see a, a nice drop in their property taxes, you know, so, um, it seems like a good time to do that, but I realize I don't know what has to happen to get it on ballot.
Mr. Rizikella?
Uh, well, Matt, we need to, if it's not on your desk, we can print out the, uh, future agenda outlook, but the general plan is to have that discussion at the workshop about overall yea or nay, and then the following council meeting, pass a resolution to the effective yea or nay, so that way people can see it, uh, because ultimately to get it on the ballot, you need to file a resolution, and pretty much it's that you, uh, want to do the library services, and it takes two different forms. If it's with the rural library district, it would basically be the annexation issue, where it's saying, hey, I'm annexing into the district with the Mid Columbia Library District. It would be a resolution putting it to the ballot and saying that it would be a special levy for that contract for services, because since we're out of Benton Franklin County, we can't just annex into Mid Columbia. It would have to be a levy that, uh, covered that.
So it's a reservation, that's the council that puts it on, and we're going to talk about it.
Exactly, and then, uh, you essentially pick the date for that. Uh, for special purpose districts like that, it's advisable to do the elections during one of the special spring ones, and there's interesting issues behind why on that, I'll get into at the workshop.
Okay. I just realized I didn't know what to say.
I'm excited about the workshop.
Yeah.
The, the prop, property tax, uh, levies will be announced in March, and there will be, there should be, a fairly significant decrease in the amount of school levy, and with that, people should see for their, their first half of property tax drop, a fairly significant amount. We think that sometime shortly after that would be a good time to go out and say, do you, do you want to do this? Because here's what it's going to cost you.
And not to take away from the workshop thunder, but do we do that, or is there supposed to be some other, like, group of friends of the library that does this? But again, I don't want to...
Well, no, it's, it's a question, a good question. It goes various forms. E, either way, it's typically your councils that pass the resolution, because it's not like a friends group can go on and say, hey, go put that on the ballot. Typically, they would have to bug either the city council or the county commission, or depending on what geography they're in. So ultimately, it would end up, uh, to this body from the College Place Resilience.
So we can't, we can't lobby for it.
No.
But a citizen group can.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be lobbying, but we would be presenting.
Okay.
And, and that's the thing that I would like to clarification on, so maybe you can have the workshop or some time clarify, because at the, at the training that they had for new, um, new elected officials, they talked about going, the council can't lobby, but individual people can take positions.
Yes.
And, you know, so I don't know where the line is there.
I'd be happy to, to do a little memo for you guys, guidelines.
I don't want to...